Good evening. Welcome to the April 17th regular session of the Board of Education. I would like you to all rise for the pledge of allegiance and then I'd like you to stay standing for just a minute while we recognize someone real quick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
If you could remain standing for just a minute, I'd like to... We had a recent death of one of our own years who served on the Board of Education for 16 years and was a tremendous supporter of our athletic boosters. His name is Jim Stroop and he went by Tank. So just for a moment of silence please. Paul DeRosa? Ms. Dyer?
Here.
Mr. Ratliff?
Here.
Mr. Wibbling?
Here.
Mr. McKinnis?
Here.
Ms. McKay? Here. All right, we'll go now to the superintendent's report. And welcome, our new superintendent. This is her first board meeting, so yay! Olympia.
Thank you, Madam President, and to the other board members. It is a pleasure to be here this evening and certainly it is a pleasure to open up with recognizing our wonderful students here in Marion City Schools. I do want to take just a moment before we get to the Grant Middle School Robotics Awards and presentation. We have a student who is here tonight. He attends Harding High School and he has received a perfect score on his ACT and reading. And his name is Dakota Ali. And Dakota, I'd like you to come up please so we can recognize you. So Dakota, congratulations to you at ACT score. Next, I'd like to bring up Mr. Chris Saban. He's our principal at Grant Middle School and he's going to introduce our Grant Robotics team. They're here tonight, they're going to do a presentation and then we also have some awards for our Grant's Robotics team.
All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome Olympia and thanks for having me here tonight, guys. I'm Chris Saban, I'm the principal at Grant Middle School. I wanted to thank you guys again for having us here tonight. If you don't know about the Grant Middle School Robotics team, you're missing out. I know the board knows very well, more the community out there. We have a really amazing thing going on there with our students. So not only that, we have two amazing teachers who I know put in countless hours based on the communication that we have on evenings and the weekends to make sure amazing learning opportunities are happening for our students inside and outside of the classroom. If you have the opportunity to stop down to our STEM lab during the day, you'll see middle school students, they're engaged in 21st century learning skills. So things you'll see are collaboration and teamwork, coding, design thinking, problem solving, data collection and analysis, synthesizing information in their engineering notebooks, and also sharing results with the scientific community. So it is my pleasure to introduce two amazing women in engineering, Jessica Creamer and Kristin Tople.
We're going to bring the kids up by their teams. We have three different teams here. So while they're all under the 2281 Grant Middle School Robotics umbrella, they also compete in smaller teams. So we thought we would bring them up and let them introduce themselves. Does that work? Because I see that you have those. Does that work? All right, come on up, guys. So maybe like one team right here.
They brought all their things.
One team in the middle and one over team right here by the way. Is there Y here?
Yeah, face that way.
Okay, so we will... And I know it's kind of like which way we want to look. So you should have some questions that you're going to be asking. And these are the type of questions that they answer when they are in their interviews that they take at competitions. They have to go in and kind of support their thinking in their engineering notebooks which they have with them and share their robots with the judges. So this is part of the competition. There are judge awards and you will see that each one of them actually has won a judge award at states. So one of the first things that they have to do is introduce themselves, say what grade level they are and what their role on the team is. So let's just start with Y. This is 2281Y Saban.
I'm Braylon Miller. I'm in eighth grade and I document.
I'm Ainsley Butler. I'm eighth grade and I code.
I'm Pease Smith. I'm second grade and I drive and document.
I'm Hillary. I'm in eighth grade and I do the driving of buildings.
And then we also have team 2281A. You guys want to step over this way just a little bit in front of that table. Introduce yourselves and tell them you're one team.
Hi, I'm Liam Hoy. I build and drive.
I am Brayden Crosby. I'm in eighth grade and I mainly program and drive.
Hi, my name is Cecil Lopez. I'm in second grade. I normally document and build.
I'm Amy C. Harper. I'm in eighth grade and I document.
And team 2281F?
I'm Joel Morris-Jones and I talk and I build and drive.
I'm Michelle Schaefer. I'm in eighth grade and I document.
I'm Addison Kyle. I'm in eighth grade. I document and program.
I'm Matthew Stover. I'm in eighth grade and I drive and drive.
And I think we might be shifting. Are we moving them a little? Yeah, I think John needs to come over there.
Yeah, I don't have a shot. You guys can find them that way along the sideline. Maybe you're going to talk to the mic or something.
You can take it off.
I can take it off.
Yep. I'll hold it and then when you're ready to talk into it, then you'll have to... Okay, so... Yes, sir.
I have a question. Which team would you like me to direct it to or who wants to volunteer to answer this question?
I don't know. We can tell, yeah, does anyone want to volunteer to go first?
Before you ask a question Ted, could each team... I mean, they're holding some hardware. I know we have robotics. Could they explain the awards they're holding?
This is the excellence award. You earn this by scoring well in all fields. We did well in our interview and our programming and driver skills and all of the qualification matches, which we do with another team driving.
That is the top award.
This is like the all-around world qualifier.
And that is the team with four women, correct? Okay.
This is the design award. You mainly get this from your notebook and documenting.
We also got the teamwork award, first place, which is like the main like game we do.
This is the second place teamwork challenge, which is the driving where you compete, I mean you go together. You go together and partner up with people to complete challenges.
This is the innovative award. It's like notebook and like, it's like the excellence award, but like it's just a little bonus.
And so we're going to pass, give these to you and you can pass around, look at them too. These are their engineering notebooks and the work that they put into these is absolutely fabulous. These are part of what their judge awards are based on. So their engineering notebooks are a record, kind of like a journal if you will, a scientific journal of their robot life and all of the iterations that they've done through it. So this is their record of all of their competition, all of their work, their thoughts, their programming that go into the competition season. Okay, so you were going to take the first question? You got the mic.
Well, my first question, you sort of answered and that one, part of that was to ask what you're proud of this year and I can see that already by your trophies and accomplishments you have done. What are some of the obstacles you have had to overcome this year?
Okay, so we just had to make different robots because just our first designs didn't really work well with how our, like our other team that we were paired up with and we just didn't really score as high. So that was an obstacle that we had to overcome and we finished with our last product, which works really well and the scoring of the field part. And we are proud of how far we came with states as we got second overall and innovative award. Yeah, that's all, sorry.
I'll take the next one then. Tell us how your team developed your gameplay and the skill strategies? And I guess did that change throughout the season too?
All right, so at the beginning of the year, we had a robot that like pushed, like we had pushed the pucks under the bar. But now we have a shooter on our robot, so like we had to get the pucks to funnel in to our robot with our shooter. And then, so like we would originally start by spinning...
We would originally start by spinning the purple, which is on the...
Oh!
Well, we would originally like try to dispense, we had a robot that could dispense all the pucks out and then we'll corral them and then push them under. And then now we have this, so we funnel them into the robot and then shoot them under the bar.
So what made you change? Did you see another team's robot that...
You score higher. You score higher when you shoot them further under the bar.
Gotcha, okay. Could you, I don't, maybe it's to you, but how did you come up with the design?
So we came up with our design because we saw other teams from 2281 build an arm like this and we saw that it was very consistent, so we decided to build an arm. And our shooter was just a reverse engineered shooter off online and then we decided to put a pusher type thing on the front, so then it would shoot and push the pucks at the same time underneath the bar. We decided that we wanted omni-wheels because they slid faster and they could drive a lot faster than the normal wheels.
Okay, and let me, let me stop you right there. For people at home that's going to be watching this, right? When you say, when you say the arm and the shooters, tell us how you score points.
Okay, so the arm, it moves up and there's a blue dispenser that is kind of like a wagon. So like, not a wagon, a seesaw. There we go, a seesaw.
Okay.
And like it will push up and then all the pucks will fall out onto the game field. And then after the pucks are dispensed, our shooter goes up, pushes them up next to the bar and shoots them under. And then we have a spinner on the back that spins this piece on the field and takes all the pucks out. And then we have a touchdown, so after, it's called a touchdown because it touches down in the two-point zone. And it touches down in the two-point zone, which is just a zone underneath the bar to double the points that you already got underneath.
So for those of the, for those people that will be watching that's never seen it, you have to hit pucks onto the ground and then push them a certain direction to score points, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then when you touch down, you get double the points?
Yes.
So and there's not any way we can see like a demo, like right, do they have the equipment needed?
No, we leave for Worlds in two weeks, so we did not bring their controllers because we only let them drive them in the game field because hair, dust, anything like that against the motors. But you are welcome to come to the STEM lab anytime and see, and see them in action. Worlds will also be streamed. We'll also make sure you have a live stream link.
So my question is, tell us about your programming or autonomous code and how you're using sensors. And I didn't write that question, as you could tell, but...
So our autonomous code is basically playing the game, but the robot by itself. No person is driving it with a controller. It goes by itself. And I, and I program that by going into the VEX IQ blocks and then I can program it to drive certain distances, work certain motors, change the velocity of those motors to make it work more efficiently. And I use all of these motors and the shooter and I can clear the field with the robot by itself. It's basically another way of playing the game, but it can be more difficult because you can't maneuver to the situation in the same way that you can while you're driving. And as far as sensors go, there's an LED sensor on the top of the robot right here, which when you press on that, you can, you can play certain autonomous programs that are under that slot. Team A I know has several, so does Team F has several LED sensors, but we don't use as many for our team.
I got another question for you, okay? How many times you guys have the excellent award, right? So that's like one of the top awards for the whole competition.
Correct.
Before you got that award, how many times did you fail?
I would say over a million, over the course of the year. As far as driving, building, autonomous code goes, in robotics, it's all about fail fast, fail forward. And the best way to play the game and to get to Dallas and to go to Worlds is to fail and then correct and then, yes, in a short amount of time. It's, the best way is to fail and then adapt and then come up with a new solution.
So you figured out a whole bunch of ways not to do it till you got to the successful robot?
Yes, we've gone through multiple robots, multiple times with arms, shooters, drive trains, so has every other team here. Like their robots are drastically different from the ones you've seen, from the ones that have been shown from the beginning of the year to now and the scores and awards show that.
How about, how much work went into this?
So, so overall, we all put like a lot of work again for over 40 minutes a day at school, we work on it. And whenever we had the bussing situations where we had two-hour delays and stuff, we would pretty much all come in before or after school and work on it for hours and, yeah. Two hours to be exact, according to...
So I think I saw too either on Twitter or something that there is a tryout or so these students are selected, how?
So it starts with sixth graders. We do not have a sixth grade competition team, but what we do is we try and get every sixth grader into the STEM lab for code.org. That's our coding class. And that's where they learn to do the autonomous programming that Ainsley was talking about. And we have a tryout for a sixth grade robotics class that we have the second encore of the day at the end of the school year. So the kids have all year to try and get into the STEM lab or know us from the cafeteria, see us in the hallway, hear about our program. And then they fill out an application to be in the class. This year we had...
We had over 80 applications for the sixth grade class.
And we have 54 students taking that class now. That class serves as the tryout to get on the seventh grade team. So we will take, you know, our best students from there, they'll be on the seventh grade team. And then as seventh graders, we will actually start their tryout process when we get back from Dallas. For about the last two weeks, we've had an online application out there. We go into the cafeterias and try and recruit the kids. We talk to them in our classes. And so then they fill out a Google form. They answer a question that they have to use research to support and they, based on their responses for that, we'll have them come in and they'll do about a week or sometimes two of tryouts. And then our eighth graders will really help facilitate that, the tryout process for the upcoming eighth graders.
And that application for the seventh grade, seventh graders going into eighth grade is open until the 28th of this month.
Now, have all the participants up here been in since sixth grade? Because we have eighth grader, I mean...
No. No. Raise your hand if you, this is, if you, if you're in eighth grade and this is your first year.
Okay.
So it was really neat, like they didn't take the sixth grade class, but they decided, I know Ainsley, you came in from pre-engineering and I'm not sure how...
I came in from code.org.
You came in from code.org?
CS4.
And CS, well, CS discoveries, yes. So when they're in there for other STEM lab classes, we just really encourage them to try it. Our theory is just try it because if you don't like it, that's okay. You never have to do it again. And that's what we really tell our sixth graders too. We're like, even if you think you might be interested, you should take the class. You should apply to take the class. Because if we offer you a spot on the team and you say no, that's okay. We'll give, we'll give it to someone else.
When is the World competition?
So we leave on the 29th.
And we come back on the 3rd.
And I assume there's some support needed for that?
Yes.
And so a lot of folks are looking in tonight. What, how can we support the team?
So we need funds for travel expenses, hotel accommodations, food, and of course robotic replacement parts.
The entry fee for the robots.
Registration, registration alone is $1,200 for one robot. So it's steep, but it's because the venue's huge. It's absolutely huge. And they, you know, they try to provide many opportunities for these kids. I believe, help me, there's like 800?
There were, yeah, almost 900 teams were there last year. They have to split up into 10 divisions. They have it at the K. Bailey Hutchinson Convention Center in Dallas. So it's, sometimes they have to, it takes them 15 minutes to get from our pit area to the competition arena where they'll be competing.
Yeah, and they shouldn't be in the same division. The way I understand it is they put us in numerical order and then starts kind of like playing cards, sorting us out into the different divisions, which is great that they don't have to go up against each other there, but it's tough that we don't get to see each other all the time. So you'll be busy and not be able to see everybody all the time. So, and that's, that's us too.
If you want to donate, we can do that through Veronica. Through Veronica, in the past, you can send a check either to Grant Middle School or straight to the DSC and just put Grant Middle School Robotics. And the memo would be great.
And when they won these, the competitions at the state level, how many teams were they competing against?
There were 50 that were made, that made it to states. Now, how many were in the state? I'm not even sure how many were in the state.
But yeah, there were 50 at states and we, these kids, they won five of the top seven awards. Five of the top seven awards, yeah.
So what support will the eighth graders get? I mean, will they just stop robotics when they come here to this building or...
Who's planning to go on to robotics in high school? I think what we see at the middle school is that because Mr. Saban helps us to run it during the school day, we have much more success. Having the kids come after school to work for another hour or two, we have them for 20 minutes mentally and that's it, then they're checked out. So during our academic intervention time, when it's 35 minutes or so, they come in, they do their work. And these guys, almost all of them come in during their lunch period and they eat and then they quickly get to work. So they're only good for about 30 minutes mentally and they'll, they'll kind of check out, but that's, you know, kind of all of us from time to time.
At the end of the day, you know, there's a reason athletics and other extracurriculars like that are at the end of the day because their bodies, their brains, they're ready for something different.
But let's raise our hand real quick. How many of you are in some kind of athletic or have been?
And how many of you are like down with the musical right now, right? There's a bunch of you. So if we had to compete with the after-school activities, sports, the musicals and stuff like that, I don't think we would get the involvement that we do. So it's huge. It being a part of our school day is, it's super important integral to the success of our program.
So my push would be... And if you're with me, they need to do the similar at the high school.
And offer a time during the day where they can do that.
So you're, you're saying, telling us that there's a falloff from middle school to high school due to it's an after-school extracurricular year?
If it was held during the school day, how many would be involved?
How many of you would have been involved with robotics if you competed with one of your after-school sports?
And, and the gentleman that you gave the award to, Dakota Ali, is a former robotics student. So, I mean, it's, it's worthwhile.
I would like to hand out some absolutely positive. And I think I was in, I was back there and I met most of you. I gave you a pen. But if I didn't give you a pen, when I call your name and say I need a pen, I'll give you that.
Do you have a pen back there?
Sure, it's not great. Braylon Miller. You seem like... Patton? Is it Adrian? Hillary? And I was there in Kansas. So, all right. Liam? Brayden? Sissel? Macy? Julian? Addison? Not you. I know. I want to thank you all for your incredible hard work, your perseverance, your resilience. And you guys make me and I'm sure everyone in this room so very, very proud. We wish you all the best at nationals and...
Thank you.
Do you guys send peaches or do they go back to the robots?
Yeah. We disassemble them while we're shooting on Texas.
Do you have a trophy case?
We get a bigger one. Okay, that's awesome.
Get these back too. Emma sure has nice handwriting. Wow!
Black Widow. Good luck. Good job.
We wish you the best at the Worlds. Go Prexies! Next, as we are transitioning, I'm going to ask Dr. Julie Kenny to come up. We are in the process as always recruiting and retention is at the forefront, so Julie's going to give us an update on retention and recruitment.
Thank you. So since taking on the role of being the HR director, I've been trying to be diligent about following through with our intentions of being honest and transparent and communicative. And so since we are in the season of hiring and retention as well, I thought it would be a good idea to just inform you and the public about what our efforts have been so far. Two things that, oh, sorry, can you go back just one second? Two things that I want to point out why we focus on our people. 83% of most budgets in Ohio and the school district budgets have focused on retention, staff development and hiring of people. So most budgets in school districts hover around the 83% expenditure mark. That's why staff retention is so important to us. And the 1.57 mark that you'll see on the slide is about teacher efficacy. So when teachers believe in our students, like the robot program that you just heard from, they really believe in their students. When we hire staff that is meaningful and the love of the students, that's why this department is so important. When we hire staff that is meaningful and, and the love of the students, that's why, um, this department is so important. So we did pass out, um, exit surveys last spring and we tried to get to everyone either by face, um, by phone call, by email and asking them, why did they leave? What did they think we could do? What did they like about MCS? And you can see the numbers, um, between May and, uh, most recently in December, we had eighty-two exit interviews and thirty-four responses. Some of the reasons that teachers and staff said that they left, um, are, are pretty regular. Relocation, job closer to home, pay is some, um, trauma-informed care, support, retirement and opportunities for growth. Sometimes teachers go somewhere else so they can, uh, be in a different position. We also asked for suggestions during this survey. So what could we do better? And I think if you look at the top four reasons that we found from our surveys, you'll see, um, we have really tried to focus on those efforts this year. Improving our connections with staff, being more visible, increasing our supports for those challenges. And always money and resources comes up. Also, I asked, um, staff and exiting staff, what is great about MCS? And those points were prevalent throughout the surveys. We have a great c- school community feeling, building those relationships with our students is the most important thing to our teachers. The dedication that they see from the district and through their colleagues is also very important. And we do have great professional development opportunities. So taking that information and going forward, what are we doing or what have we done this year to try to pinpoint and ma- make ourselves improve? So the recruiting efforts, we've been to a lot of career job fairs this year. I think ten was our number, both for classified, like last week we were just at MTC. And for certified efforts, we were at OU, Ohio State, Bowling Green, all the big hitters. Um, and so we really wanna concentrate on finding those people that want to be in Marion City and have those skills that can fill our gaps. We've also worked on in the HR department, improving our processes for checking out. So when someone would leave, we have a streamlined process ready to go for this year as far as when they'll take their exit survey, how they'll leave, um, and make sure we have those checklists going so we don't miss any of our markers. We're working on growing our own program. So specifically in May, we're putting together a job fair that we're trying to recruit our high school students. Students ages fourteen and above can work in the state of Ohio for payment. Um, we, we could use a painting crew, help with custodial. We could use teacher aides in our summer school programs, things like that. Or if students didn't wanna get paid, they could also accrue, um, service hours for community service. The cruise ship experience is a, um, comment that I had with some of the principals and we're trying to put together a committee. So when a substitute teacher comes into our district, we get the same experience in every building that. Very happy to see you, thank you for your help. Here's a folder, what you can expect for this building and here how, here's how we can help your day go smoothly. Also, at the end, you'll see new teacher network and teacher mentors. Those are some takeaways from our surveys, just trying to feed into that family feeling and connection for our new teachers so they really become embedded in our district. As part of our leadership goal, that's one of our pillars, we wanted to reduce staff turnover. So mid-year, we, just, um, about a month ago, we sent a survey so staff could indicate what their intentions were for staying or going for next year. And of the surveys that were returned, ninety-four percent said they plan to stay with us for next year. Again, we are hiring, so here's a list of all different things that we could use your help with. And if you hold your phone up to the computer screen, you'll be able to scan that QR code and go straight to our application. Or go to our website, call us at two-two-three-four-four-zero-four. Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, when you said money, uh, some of the, uh, reasons for leaving were money slash resources. What do you mean by resources?
Well, some of the resources that we're talked about were, um, supporting the trauma around some students and things like that. So that's one of the things that we actually did, um, di- handle this year, like with our peace rooms and our realignment of staff in certain areas, like, uh, super subs. So that was something that was on the survey. Um, other, others indicated that they were going to a higher paying district, which in this area, um, and even into Delaware and around, we're very competitive.
Okay, but resources wasn't meaning, I mean, are there, uh, when we say resources, were they talking about? Cause the first example you gave was kinda resources, how we support them here. But are they saying anything about continuing education or, or anything like that? Like those kind of opportunities, I guess, that some schools might have?
Yeah, we do offer professional development and, uh, salary advancement opportunities. Of course, I think when we talk about that, we always wanna compare our resources, um, to what somebody else may, um, promise. And so just asking like how much, like, was it, two years ago, we didn't have a master's plus thirty column. And so we've added that. Um, some districts have a PhD or an EDD column and those things. Um, so those kind of comments were found in there too.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thanks, Julie. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have two more pieces. I just wanna give a brief update on the equity audit. I know the last time that we spoke, we were talking about the student survey. And I just wanted to speak publicly so that the public knows that we did revamp that. We had our diversity and equity committee meeting on April third. And basically, we're going to run the survey in-house for the remainder of the grades. So, um, we will give it to grades seventh and eighth at Grant and then we will give it to grades ten, eleven and twelve. And really, we took that old survey that Marion City had around the sense of belonging for students. And we kind of, um, revised it and put it into the same themes as the survey that Mosaic gave out so that we will be able to compare, um, that data. And I think what's important for everyone to know, um, this is a new journey for Marion City Schools to do an equity audit. Um, it is one of the priorities in the state of Ohio for school districts to ensure that every student is getting a quality education. And by implementing the student survey, we're capturing the student base. And really, the students are the center of everything that we do. They are our number one clients, um, similar to how any organization that we use, you know, I just stayed at a hotel and as soon as I checked out, I got a survey into my email that said, hey, how are we doing? How did you feel? Did we welcome you? Did we, did we, did you enjoy your stay? Would you come back? So these are the, this is the information that's gonna help us be a better district. It's gonna help us understand how our students feel. Um, we will be able to disaggregate the data. We do ask demographic questions such as their race, how they identify with, uh, gender. Um, we've added a religion question, um, to our in-house. Because again, if we see trends where there are groups of our students that don't feel like they belong in Marion City Schools, then we need to look at our practices to ensure that they all, students are getting what they need. And equity is about meeting students where they are and not necessarily where we as the adults want them to be. Because that's what every child needs in order to be successful. So we feel, um, confident with being able to at least use this as a starting point. Um, that survey is available on the Harding High School website. If anybody wants to actually review the questions we sent out and opt out to our parents. Tomorrow, we will be running that here at the high school. Um, and then we will run the survey on May eighth and ninth at Grant. So, um, I just wanted to give an update. And last but not least, I also wanted to just give a public update around the superintendent transition. Um, I obviously have officially transitioned into the superintendent seat and Steve is working a few days here and there um, to support us, um, in the assistant superintendent role. And, um, I just wanna say a big, uh, a big push or a big priority of mine from at least now until the end of the school year is to get out and to run the listening and learning sessions. So I have started attending staff meetings. I am scheduled to visit every staff before the end of the school year because I do wanna capture teachers before they leave. Um, I would like to, um, make some meetings with parents, which I feel like can also do that over the summer. Um, we've done the opening video, the superintendent's video to the community. And really, right now, we're, you know, trying to collect feedback from as many stakeholders as possible because a big part of this summer is gonna be our team planning what those goals are gonna be for Marion City, what those outcomes are that we want, what are the things that we're doing well, that we wanna continue to do? And what are some things that, um, we really wanna change? So, um, I basically just go introduce myself at the session. I give an opportunity if anyone wants to ask me questions or say, make a comment. Some of them, um, are a little shy. So I've also developed a Google form that we send out right after the listening and learning session. Um, it's anonymous. We just ask them to clarify, are you a student? Are you a staff member? Are you a community member? Um, and so far, I have been able to meet with a group of students. Um, and I also was recently with the Retired Teachers Association for Marion County. Um, they were actually my first group. And, um, it was just really enjoyable to sit with them and hear from them about, you know, priorities that they have seen or have had. Um, so I will continue to do that outreach and try to gather as much information as we can from various stakeholder groups. So I just wanted to let everyone know that they should expect to see me and, um, you know, we're welcoming feedback at this time as we're planning on what our twenty-three, twenty-four goals will be. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Assistant Superintendent's report. Steve, you're up.
Thank you, President McKay. So the first item, uh, I get to do the, uh, the fun things. Hopefully, it's viewed that way. But, um, I'm gonna read, uh, some of these bullet points, uh, versus maybe just having a conversation like we're used to. And I just don't wanna miss anything and I just want to make sure there's clarity on what we're looking at here. So, uh, just to take you back, I know Tara mentioned this, uh, the last board meeting, uh, about baseball facilities. Um, but the next building and grounds meeting is not till after this meeting. So I didn't wanna miss that opportunity. And also, we have some contracts that I know that you know that are on the board agenda tonight. Uh, so I wanna take some time to talk about this exciting project. I want you to, uh, again, know that, uh, I certainly wouldn't want you, nor I think the community, wouldn't want you spending, uh, this type of money uh, without some background information, nor would I, I ask you to do that. So, um, we wanna make sure that, again, that, uh, we're being transparent, as mentioned, uh, earlier on other subjects. So I want the board to know, I want the community to know how much really thought that went into this and kinda what, again, as springboard off what Tara said last meeting, what the impetus of this exactly was. So I was actually updated on the current state of our baseball and softball faci- facilities, uh, at Grant Middle School early on, when I actually first started, uh, in Marion, which was, uh, just short, uh, eleven months ago in May. So, um, and what, really where it came about is I walked into Dr. Iresi's office and he had a whiteboard there and it said, baseball. And that's all it said. So, um, he had left before I actually found out what that was. And so I called him and, uh, you know, he told me what it was. And, uh, he said, there's a big fat file and I could find it and so forth, and I did. So there were some suggestions in there about where things have been, where we are, and maybe even where we were going. And, uh, he wanted me to reach out to a couple of people that he had spoken to. And, uh, presently, they were Mr. Kevin Hall and Dr. Moodley. So I reached out to those folks and reached out to Harding High School coaches, the athletic director, you know, just tried to get as much background information as I could. And two things were abundantly clear, uh, right away, that the, uh, Grant Middle School facility, um, was in desperate need of repair. And there was nothing at Harding High School as far as a baseball, uh, facility after being here, the amount of years it's been here. Uh, so, um, the first thing that needed to happen is that there was still, it appeared that we still needed consensus on where things should be. Uh, because there were different, uh, community, uh, folks that, and, and even school personnel who felt, you know, maybe we needed to be, uh, at Grant Middle School, you know, for the foreseeable future. Maybe it needed to be here, maybe it needed to be in another area within, within the city. So through all these discussions, and again, this has gone on through the entire, uh, school year, uh, we finally came to consensus that the long range, uh, was that we really needed to improve Grant Middle School. Um, uh, essentially, I think there's even, you know, safety hazards there. But then the look to the future of what's gonna be here at Harding High School, uh, frankly, and, and what's best for our kids and our coaches. So we continued to organize meetings throughout the year, uh, which took place on an approximate monthly basis uh, with those groups that I, uh, aforementioned with the high school and with, um, community stakeholders. And we also brought on Veronica, uh, as a district treasurer then, uh, as far as what we might be looking at, um, dollar-wise. The result of these meetings enabled us to conclude that we need to upgrade, uh, improve Grant Middle School uh, while planning a major campaign, which you're gonna hear about more later at Harding High School. Uh, we've been able, able to get proposals and drawings, including pricing for Grant Middle School. Uh, and that's what you see on the board agenda, uh, this evening for those improvements, uh, presently at Grant Middle School only. This project, we believe, believe can start immediately. Uh, and again, um, continue to be used by our Harding High School baseball team in this interim period. Hopefully, again, as we, um, unroll this other plan. And so I think we're finally at a place where, you know, we wanna start, uh, to have, uh, conversations about what it looks like. And again, as noted, our, our middle school baseball facility, which is used by our high school, um, it's, uh, it's been let go much too long. Just put it that way, uh, as far as somebody's coming from several districts and actually visiting and reviewing these facilities. I don't think it's what our students deserve. I don't think it's what our community deserves and I'm sure it's not what visiting teams, uh, expect. Uh, so, um, I think if we hope to increase our participation and grow our own program, uh, at the middle school level, this needs to happen. And our, these facilities need, need to be improved. And we believe that this plan of renovating, um, those facilities will, will do that. The good news is, um, and I'm gonna say potential, cause everybody's waiting for the other one to, uh, make sure that there's commitment. But we have, uh, what we hope is, uh, and Dr. Moodley and Mr. Hall working on this, um, approximately one hundred thousand dollars in private donations. We have a commitment, if we can get these others, uh, fifty thousand dollars from the boosters and approximately fifty thousand dollars, uh, from the district. For, and that, again, this is for Grant Middle School. And, um, and so just mentioning, and I, I don't wanna try to, you know, to muddy the waters, but I do wanna say that, you know, the bigger part of this is frankly, um, doing something exciting for Harding High School. And, um, that's why we need Grant Middle School to be better than it is. Because in this interim period, that we hope is an interim period, um, our, our students deserve a place that, uh, they can play and, uh, feel good about. And again, um, for the foreseeable future until something special can happen here. So what we'll be talking to the board about in May, uh, that's our timeline. I sketched out a timeline earlier, um, that we were gonna be marching towards May, the May board meeting, uh, that we're going to present a plan for a baseball and softball facility here at Harding High School that could eventually include restrooms, concessions and possibly a walking path that, uh, we would be working with, uh, the Ohio State University on. Um, and again, that was through talking to Dr. Moodley. I think, again, this is something that the students deserve, something the community deserves. Uh, it needs to be where the students and coaches are, in my opinion. And that's here at Harding High School. In looking at what's been done in the district before, um, I think it's gonna have to be something similar to the football stadium, uh, program that you had. That is gonna have to be a commitment from the district, from the athletic department, from businesses, from private donors, from boosters, you know, the whole gamut. Again, it's, it's in the planning stages. We've been with a architect and again, that aforementioned group, so Veronica, um, the, all the high school coaches, the athletic director and so forth, with an architect in this room, uh, about a month ago. And we hope to have those drawings and renderings, uh, ready for presentation. And I'm just hoping when that happens, it's something that the entire community can get behind and support at that point. So, uh, again, something similar to the, the stadium as we, um, envisioned it at, at that time.
And we're looking at girls softball too?
Yep, absolutely. And we had talked about doing it, and just so you know, it fades. And that would be wonderful, again, depending on what this comes in as dollar-wise, you know.
I know the girls softball's in a little bit better shape.
It is, it is. It's something I can do. But again, um, you know, when you look at the overall facility out there, it's certainly not, uh, in tune with where I think it needs to be. But, um, uh, when you look. When you look at it, we talked about doing it in phases. And again, depending on what these prices come in, and that's why, you know, there hasn't been any formal presentation because we're waiting on that, that it even could be done in phases. And, you know, you have renderings and drawings to show people or, you know, a sign, excuse our dust, under construction or something. And, you know, maybe phase one is, and what we talked about is, what's the minimum you need to play a game? What's the very minimum? You need a field. Okay? You need a backstop. All right? An outfield, a fence, et cetera. But right away, do you need the dugout right away? You know, turf probably because you don't want to rip up grass and then put turf in later and so forth. Do you need a press box right away? Do you need a concession right away? Now, again, if everything comes in and I, you know, in a perfect world, I'm like, yeah, let's do it all. But maybe the minimum is phase one. And then phase two, depending on dollars come in, and I understand it's kind of how the stadium was unrolling, then maybe what comes into that phase two, phase three, et cetera. So, you know, the planning is there. I think the drawings and the money associated with it will, I think, will clearly show what the need is going to be at that point. And then with the presentation, and I know Dr. Moodley plans on attending that May 15 board meeting because I think you need a community member. I don't think it's somebody internally that can run something like that. I'm not saying he's going to run it, but I know he wants to speak on it. So, and it's a big project. It's between two buildings. I didn't want to cross them, but at some point, they probably are going to cross. And I think it's something that, again, the community and the schools are deserving of.
So what about softball at Grant?
Oh, great question.
Because I know we have the field here for varsity in terms of junior high softball.
Yeah, so once we, we talked to them about it, once we have it rolling, where the baseball field is, because it's in the back and we will start moving forward, then I'll be working with Jake to get those estimates for that.
So would you, is it fair to say that that plan is not nearly as developed as the baseball?
I would say the softball is not yet. It's going to be left because there's no press box to tear down. There's fencing to fix back there and those two dugouts that are there. You won't have to do the walking path there because of where the parking lot is. But yes, the baseball is definitely further along. And so what we thought was, once we were done with that, that we would start to move forward towards the softball field, out towards that parking lot.
The softball field at the Grant Middle School?
At Grant, right.
Would only be middle school students?
Correct.
For right now?
Yes, yeah. Because at least right now, the softball team has a place to go, you know, the varsity team's here and so forth, and the middle school team and so forth. It's just the other has essentially nothing.
Right. And the fencing costs, we don't, we're still waiting on?
Yes, yeah.
Correct.
Sorry, I know, I invited Jake to, was that here yet at all, fencing?
This week, yes.
Thank you.
So I was concerned about, or I think it was this past weekend where we saw vandalism with the poor potties over at Grant. That was my one thing. And two, we, if you've ever watched a baseball game and you park and you have to go like, I mean, you got to go a country mile to get to the actual field, how are we being compliant with, you know, handicap accessibility and those type of things? So I was concerned with that. But I do agree that this, and you said it is exciting for our district. We have improved a whole bunch of facilities, our track, our football field, you know. So I think it is something that is exciting for our district, for our kids. And I do want to encourage softball because I was also at Lincoln Park last week, and I'm going from field to field trying to figure out, you know, where our kids are. And everybody's uniform is red and black. It seems like that's just a popular color. So just the consistency and the home and the intimacy, so compliance, the vandalism piece, and I do agree that's exciting for our district.
Yeah, and if you don't mind, let me mention the access. So part of the plan for this, the Grant Middle School to get back here, is an ADA path. So we're going to take care of that and make sure that occurs. Because again, right now, when you get out of your car at that parking lot and have to start walking towards the field, you essentially hit grass right away. And then you have to walk through grass all the way up to anywhere you want to sit. And that, part of that grass is actually in left field. So if, you know, if you come after the game starts, you're essentially walking in the field of play. So we're going to try to, I should say try, we're going to take care of all that under Jake's visual supervision.
I know that. Coach Kearns does the gator there, so if people need a ride, you can ride them up the hill.
Valet.
And I think we have great precedence for the community participation in these kind of projects with the stadium being one, and tennis courts, just most recently, were expanded and made, basically renovated totally. So, and that was all done by private funds as well. So I think you'll get a lot of support for these kinds of projects.
I'm hoping.
And yeah, that's, I guess, my concern, too, is in terms of have we secured the private funding? I know they want to see support from the board, too. Personally, I just feel more comfortable, and again, if they say that we're going to get the final numbers this week, that would help. To me, I feel that the conversations need to continue for just a little bit longer. And to get the softball, everybody knows Title IX, and as we should, we have to adhere to it, and we should adhere to it. If we look at baseball and softball at Grant at one time to make sure that we, I mean, for us to talk about diversity and equity as much as we do and to not address both sports at the same time, especially when they're in the same location, I mean, they're both up on the hill, that's where I would feel more comfortable, that the community knows what we're getting into in terms of this project. And you've already mentioned the grand scheme here. But I think that's where I would like to see the whole project all at once and to get a true final number before we would vote on anything. And I know that those numbers are coming quickly, too.
Yeah. The only I'll say in consultation with even the folks we're working with, the idea of starting in the back and moving forward, because I hear you, and coming up through, it's going to be within the scope of our plan. And I don't think there's any question that it's going to fall within the parameters of the dollar amount. And at least, you know, this is me just saying it, is I would like Jake to be able to start with the company so we can get moving on this back portion, because I hear what you're saying, and so we can start moving forward. Because there's a bit of commitment, and the softball coach has been every meeting, that we need to also improve that facility. So there's no question it's going to get upgraded and improved, so.
But when?
I guess that's where I would be.
And when?
You know, it's all going to depend on when that back part gets completed and they can start coming forward. But even if, you know.
Because that becomes, like Mr. Wibling has pointed out, we're spending, or potentially tonight, on the agenda is about $400,000 for the male side of things, and we have nothing and no, nothing budgeted or planned as of right now for the female side of things. And that field, if we're talking Grant, is in total disrepair, unplayable. And I think we can reposition the field to potentially use the same walking pathway. It would have to be moved, the field would have to be moved where home plate is probably where your pathway starts.
Are you talking about the current softball field?
The current, the way it was before, it's like totally grown out.
I take a little issue about not having spent money on softball because we did put up new fencing at the high school. The outfield is all, and we tiled it this past season, correct? So we went out to look at that as a group and started making some repairs there. I think also at middle school now, and I can't put a date on this, but the outfield fence is relatively, when I say relatively, within a few years newer because we did have a snow fence for a great deal of time up there for the softball field. So we have spent some money over periods of time for softball. Not enough, and we, I think this planned phase in is important to it. But those are all good points. But you got to start. You got to get started.
But there's, but I appreciate that, but they've spent nowhere near on softball here what they're going to spend just in this one new dugout fencing project that's in front of us. And we have no definites, or at least in this, what is being proposed is just phase one. There is no follow-up phase. Yes, we're going to get a presentation, but that might be years or who knows how long. And we don't know if we'll be able to raise the money or have the money. And it's my understanding that the community commitment is that money would be secured if we're doing both up at the hill area, not just the baseball. That's what I took it as. I, people can correct me, but I think we have to have, before anything passes for the boys, the phase, I don't know what you want to call it, 1A or 2 or something, has to be phased in for what we're going to do for the female aspect of that sport, for softball. I, I mean, I think this is empty promises is what we're making right now.
When are we planning on starting? I know it's baseball season right now, so are we going to start this before the next board meeting or not?
No, if we can get the contracts approved as soon as the last home game is approved, that's why we sort of wanted to get going on the Grant project in the back part where the boys is, so we can start right away. And, you know, Jake's been working with that company. You know, and I'll just say this, again, the commitment's going to be there, and I know we can say it's empty because nothing's down yet. But again, once that part is done back there, and again, the bigger portion of it or a huge amount is that ADA walking path going back there. The thing with the girls is, it's essentially, you know, that backstop and those dugouts and doing work to those grounds. It's not near the scope of project that that baseball is. We're not tearing down a press box and all that like we are. We're not having to move that backstop back like we are in this one, move the fencing back so we can move, or move the dugout back. I have this all pictured in my mind because I've gone over it so many times. So the scope of what's going to be done at that girls' facility will be much less than what's going to be done here. And it's going to be done. I mean, I know we say that sitting here, but as soon as we're done with this, the boys' project, we can then move forward to the girls' project, so.
And you have talked, you said the softball, the women's softball coach has been?
Yep, every meeting.
Okay. So they've had input and they're okay with where we are with this?
All right. All right.
All right. The next item is transportation. Just wanted to give an update. As hopefully you've heard, and what we experienced, that it's going very well since the institution of the current plan. Again, I want to continually thank, of course, now it's Brett, but I want to thank him for working through this with our entire transportation department. Again, it's been no easy task. We have had occasional issues with transporting St. Marion, St. Mary's and Marion Prep. But we've worked with those individual schools to work through things. And again, to reiterate for our board and our community, we are required to transport those students. I know that Julie and Brett held a job fair, occurred last, was it last Wednesday? Last Wednesday? And I don't know if you want to comment on that, but I heard we had about a dozen folks maybe show up today?
Yeah, we had nine potentials from that evening and then one more the next day, so got quite a good feeling so far.
So hopefully we have some traction on that. And again, thank Brett and Julie for holding that job fair, along with other supportive folks. And just to mention again, hey, we're still looking for drivers. Go to the QR code. Have you done so already?
I think we're hiring one tonight. Yes.
Yes. The word's out.
What happened today? Because I know we had to, we were only transporting our kids today.
I didn't hear that.
Yes, everything was fine. Okay.
I guess I have a question with, I know we were talking about inside conversations with coaches potentially driving. I know, I think we've had a few that took the substitute van drivers class, correct? And from our website in terms of the job posting, it says, "We now have openings for substitute van drivers. Pay rate is $12.12 per hour." Are our coaches getting compensated then if they are the ones who are the substitute van drivers? And as a former coach, I know the last thing I want to worry about on a game day is driving the players there, too. So are we paying them the hourly rate that's part of this? Or are we paying mileage? I know we've got gas stipends at other parts of the district, or the?
That's a great question, actually. And no, it's not allowed, actually. So coaches have a supplemental contract. So, you know, it's a contract during the day for their teaching, and then they have a supplemental. So while they're under that supplemental, they can't be compensated further for driving the van. So the reason they're getting that, or allowed to do that, is because they got that license. And if there's an issue then in transportation, they have the ability to transport those kids, but they don't get more compensation for it. So, because they're currently under a supplemental.
What about mileage?
No.
Why?
Well, they would be getting paid mileage to drive our school van.
No, I get it, but what if they're driving their own vehicles?
They wouldn't be transporting our students.
Yeah.
Well, what if they're driving to the competition? Because we've had, we've had students, tennis, for example, had to transport themselves. Coaches had to drive, right? That's happened. Why are they not getting mileage?
If a student, students can transport, again, we don't like it, but students can transport or take themselves somewhere. We can have parents transport. If coaches have to go to a game in their own vehicle, what I would say, sitting here right now, and we can certainly look into it, is that, again, they're being compensated as part of their supplemental. But I hear you on the mileage, and, you know, maybe that's a question I need to channel.
Yeah, my thing is that the driving's not part of the supplemental.
If you're driving, yeah.
Or even the van driving, too.
I understand if they're doing a van, that they're using our van, and the time from point A to B is probably the same, I get all that one. I'm just talking if they ever have to use their personal vehicles to make it to a game is all I'm wanting to address if that happens.
I don't know if anybody's asked for it this year, but I know that we have had some one-offs in the past.
That's the only one if they're using their personal is all I'm concerned.
And they were compensated for mileage.
And the number, correct me if I'm wrong, for a vehicle to be considered a van, is it nine passengers or less is what it was designed for? So I guess if you're talking about a coach, if he or she needs to drive their own vehicle because there's not enough room, whereas if we didn't have this transportation situation we have right now, then they wouldn't have to worry about it. But now they are being somewhat forced to drive when they wouldn't normally have to be. I think that's another situation which mileage should be compensated.
Is that a union thing, though? Is that something that needs to be negotiated and, no?
No, I think we can find that out.
Just for, like you said, the one-off situations.
I couldn't, couldn't really tell you if anybody's asked, but I don't, no one's asked me how, hey, I had this mileage sheet, should I pay it? So, okay.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right. Treasurers' report. We need approval of the March 3rd and March 16th minutes as presented. Do I have a motion?
So move.
One second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item B, financial approvals. Motion to approve the following financial items, a $500 donation to Grant Robotics from the MEA. Do I have a motion?
So move.
What?
Somebody changed that motion. There should be a motion to approve the other financial reports that are on there.
Okay. Yeah, they're gone.
Yeah.
On my print-off. And I can't see, sorry.
No, they were, they were our previous ones.
Yeah. Okay. I think somebody added those. It's fine.
And I cannot get this.
They're down below. I mean, they're listed.
Okay.
Right.
5B, right?
Financial approvals? Okay.
Looks like the attachments are there, but not?
Not the words.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're at 5B. The financial approvals. Okay, so we've got the donations and so that was, that's Okay, so we've got the donations and so that was, that should have been item C?
No, it's all together.
Okay, so then we have fund balances of March twenty twenty-three, financials and checks. Uh, and so Scott made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion, call the roll.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Now we come to the hearing of the public. This is three minutes, uh, of, of your time to us. Um, the Board of Education recognizes the value of school governance, of public comment on educational issues. And the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation is a time set aside for the board to listen to public comments, but it is not intended as a time for dialogue. The board offers public participation to members in the public in accordance with the procedures below. The board applies these procedures to all speakers and does not discriminate based on the identity of the speaker. Or the content of the speech or the viewpoint of the speaker. All right, so I'm gonna set my timer here. And our first person is Jim Bechtel. And you live on two hundred Wildwood Court, correct? Okay, and that's not in Marion City School District, is it?
Pardon me?
Is that in the Marion City School District?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I wanna thank the board for allowing me to speak. Um, I have a copy of the survey that was given out two months ago. I'm not going to read from it. We all know it's in it. However, I will reference it at the end. Um, the first part. It's, it's rather a personal message, but the first part is because I wanted to explain my passion that I have for protecting Ohio children. Um, I wanna share something I've never told anyone, my parents or even my wife. That in nineteen fifty-four, at the age of four, I was sexually molested by a trusted man in our neighborhood. I was so frightened and embarrassed and ashamed, I never told anyone, left him to keep it inside and deal with it on my own. It had a profound impact on my life that only got worse with time. I began questioning my identity, my sexuality and even my gender. What did that man see in me that drove him to act that way was the question. I suffered many years of isolation and depression. And it seemed that hate and unforgiveness became my portion. I developed many addictions to kill the pain, to try and kill that pain. When I met a man named Jesus, he convinced me I was his son and he had a plan for my life. He didn't fix everything right away, but started by bringing me out of my addictions. I would pray and repent of drug use, go to bed and wake up free of the addiction, never to have another craving and with no withdrawal. This happened with alcohol and even tobacco. It truly was an absolute miracle for I was deeply addicted to many things. As I became free of my addictions, my faith grew. I realized with God, nothing was impossible. He brought a woman into my life that was a perfect match. And although I lost her two years ago, I still wear her ring, for she was and is the love of my life. Why am I sharing this, you might ask? It's because words matter. My wife left me two stepsons, who I couldn't love anymore if they were biologically mine. Michael's thirty-two now and bought into all the lies and words of the enemy that tells him he can pick his gender. I've been up late with him, talking him down from suicide, self harm from cuttings and months of deep depression. He has given in to the lies and now lives that lifestyle. He is worse now than he's ever been. My heart aches for him and I pray for him daily. A doctor tweeted this the other day. Our kids are not transgender. They're impressionable. The questions that are asked in this survey from people in positions of great authority. To impressionable minds going through puberty are abusive and unacceptable. At a time when young minds are thirsty for guidance, they're given more questions than answers that have nothing to do with education.
Mr. Bechtel?
My problems arose from a criminal act perpetrated against me. Michael's came from words written by so-called professionals in a position of authority that gave great weight to words of lies and deceit.
Mr. Bechtel?
James one eight states, "A double-minded man is unstable in all his ways." I encourage you all to go forward, asking yourself, "Am I bringing stability to our children or further confusion?"
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Andre Washington. And you're an OPEC representative. Great, welcome. Three minutes. Sorry.
Oh, that's fine. To the board president, board members, superintendent, treasurer and to everyone in the listening audience. I was taught by my grandmother that it's always good manners to introduce myself if you go into someone's house. So your previous field rep Larry retired, so I'm taking Larry's spot temporarily. Until they get another rep and I just thought it'd be appropriate if I came and introduced myself to you guys and let you know who I am. My name's Andre Washington and I humbly serve the members of OPEC, the classified staff here. Um, I was sitting in the back and I was just listening and I felt like I was from Marion because I was so proud of these students, you know? Perfect, perfect score, um, the robotics, um, so. I am going to personally tomorrow donate twenty-five dollars. And I'm hoping that somebody in the listening audience will match my twenty-five dollars to get these kids to where they need to be. And if you don't have twenty-five dollars, I'm sure they'll take a dollar, five dollars, ten dollars. But at the end of the day, it all adds up because we're all here for one reason only and that is the children. So I'm going to pay my fair share. I think that should give me thirty more seconds on the clock. I, um, I, I know you're new on the job, um, Madam Superintendent. We appreciate, we look forward to working with you. We are in negotiations right now. And you said that you're gonna be going around. We look forward to you coming around and talking to the classified staff also. Because it takes a village to raise these kids and the village starts off with our bus drivers, getting the kids to and from school safely. When they get to school, I don't know any kids that can learn on an empty stomach. So our food service workers are very valuable and very critical to the, um, education of these kids. Our instructional assistants working side by side with the teachers. Our, our maintenance crew, our custodians, they see things that the administration and other, um, staff members don't see. So again, and then I can't forget the secretaries, because if you have a good secretary, the building is running smoothly. So it takes a village to raise these kids and to educate them. And we look forward to working with you, Superintendent and the board, to help raise the best and the brightest here in Marion. And I'm gonna close and say that, um, when it comes to recruitment, um, you're talking to the grandfather of recruitment. And I am willing to share any ideas with you to help get, um, because if you have, if you're fully staffed. Then our members are happy because they're not doing double work. So I'm willing to share, but I will say this, one of the best recruitment tools and it's very cheap. And you may have already thought about it, but if you send something out to every church, because there's a church on every corner. And just let them know what jobs you have open. And I tell you, there's gonna be grandmothers gonna go downstairs in the basement, she gonna say, "Boy, get a hock of this couch." And go on down to Marion City Schools. But you know what? One of the best advertisement is happy employees. Because I don't care what nobody say, social media, the news, the best advertisement is word of mouth. And if you take care of your employees and your employees are happy, when someone says, "Where do you work?", they're gonna smile and say, "Marion City Schools." And that's all they need to do is smile. Because if they frown and say Marion City Schools, that's putting a bad name out there for you guys. So happy employee is the best word of mouth and the best advertisement. And we will work with you and not apart to make sure that we fill all the positions and tell everybody. That Marion City Schools is the employer of choice. Thank you.
And you can write your check and you can give it to the lady.
I'll bring my check tomorrow during the negotiations, okay? Somebody write down where I have, who I have to make it out to.
You'll be sent right next. Thank you very much.
Okay, but thank you and I enjoy, for the short time that I'll be here, I enjoy working with you. Oh, just to let you know, I live in Delaware, so I'm not all the way in Columbus, so I am your neighbor. And, um, I look, I used to come to Marion all the time because, um, I'm the state vice president of the NAACP. And you guys used to have a really strong NAACP unit here and they just kind of dissolved. But, um, maybe we can get that back up and going. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Start something now.
That was Mary Houston's baby.
Mary Houston.
I remember. All right.
Is that it?
Agenda confirmation. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I would like to, to move, based on what I had said before, and this is not against the, the project. I, I coached on those fields. I know how in disarray they, they were back then and I, I know they've gotten worse. I would move, uh, to, to table, um, both ten B and E. Which would be Grant Baseball Renovations and the less group in terms of the, uh, the path that we've talked. We know we need these things, but I, I think we need the, the final numbers for the, the fencing. I, I feel strongly, I, I think other board members do as well, we have to make sure, and I know that it's there verbally, but I wanna see it in print. The, the same commitment, even if the project doesn't require the same amount of work for that softball field. I, I feel comfortable saying that's probably the worst field we have in the district right now. Uh, the softball field, it's up on the field, or up on the hill. I would just like to see the conversations continue. I know we have a presentation that was mentioned coming up in May. I don't think we're playing on breaking ground on anything new until the baseball season's over. We have another board meeting before then. And just to get a more refined finished product before any of us vote on, uh, a measure with this much money. We don't know what the final amount is going to be. So I do move that we, we, we table it. Again, I'm for the pro, I, I, but I just need more information before I feel comfortable voting.
So we mentioned it though, um, during the last board meeting. And, um, in talking with people who are involved with this, um. I, I feel that the community and our community engagement, um, I feel confident that, um. You know, in those conversations and I also, I didn't bring it with me, um, did have the plans and I've met with Kevin Hall. Um, but I, I understand what you're saying too and title nine, you know, is, is something that has been so beneficial in my life. But I'm wondering, um, if tabling this, um, how far would that put us, uh, behind in moving forth? With, um, this project and just specifically what, other than the bottom line, um, and numbers? What, uh, would tabling this accomplish? What, what are we looking at? What do you want?
I, I, again, I wanna see the final numbers in terms, okay, so fifty thousand from the boosters. A hundred thousand from private sources if we're able to secure those. And then what is left over is what we are going to be footing the bill for. And I would like to know a definitive number before I say yes to, I don't wanna give access to a blank check. You know, in terms of us being in charge of the, the taxpayers' money, I, that's the first thing I would like to see. And then also, as I said, and I, I believe them, I, I've talked to people who are, who are the coaches, that these conversations have been taking place. But I just wanna see that the softball as part, just, I understand there's phases of it. And even if we roll it out in phases, I'm fine with it, but I wanna see it all, I guess, in one big proposal, I guess.
As I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, the package tonight being offered is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That money is already secured. Is that, or is the whole project more than that?
And private.
Right, it's, it's more than that. We're trying to.
But it's a cap of two fifty?
So if you look at B, it even says that the, um, renovations pending receive a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in donations from booster and, and private funds and. Um, again, I, I guess what I would say and I hear what you're saying is that, you know, for this project, I appreciate the support of it. To, to start moving forward, at least to get things going. I just think Jake needs the latitude to be able to get started and then start to exercise these contracts. Because again, all, all the folks have been involved in discussion along the way. So they know how things are gonna unfold. So the softball coach knows, the baseball coach knows.
Except the board. The one that has to, to sign off doesn't know. So I would second Mr. Wibbling's motion without, uh, to call this to be removed. Uh, because without a female equivalent, there's no way I can vote for this.
And I'd be in support of it. If we have to call a special meeting, let's say the, the, the numbers come in immediately and we get a softball plan and that happens in a, in a week or two. Let's, I, I'm not saying no, I just, we need more time, we need more information to make a well-informed decision.
I mean, for me, I need a, a female equivalent. I, I just can't spend four hundred thousand on male, uh, athletics and spend zero on females. With the hopes that it's gonna be sometime in the future. I mean, that's not good enough for female athletics. It's just not. And then we're gonna sit here and say we're equity and diversion and inclusion and we have no plan for females. I mean, it, it is just not gonna happen for me.
Well, tonight, we're only approving two eighty, around two hundred and eighty-six thousand, not, not four hundred.
You guys can approve that. I'm not approving that because there is not a female equivalent.
Okay, so we have a motion to, um.
Move it and I have a second on the table.
Okay.
So that's A or no, B?
B and E and I, I look at them both together just because it's one big project.
To table items B and E.
B is a boy, yep, and E.
Okay, and that was.
How is, how is E's? I mean, it's a handicap accessibility issue. You're voting against a handicap accessibility?
I'm not voting against anything. I'm asking to table it so we can further discuss it and figure out what are we gonna do with the girls softball field? Which is one of the worst fields, if not the worst field in the district and are there better, you know, Mr. Ratliff had even mentioned, well, maybe you. Can you reconfigure that field if you move home plate to the other end and then maybe that, it's. In terms of the compliance that Ms. Dyer mentioned before, that maybe that changes the nature of even that ramp too. In terms of how far does that have to go? What about the grading? I mean, we know how steep that, the hill is if you went straight up from the fitness center, if we come from the, I just think there's more discussions and I know the discussions have been had. I'm not doubting that at all and again, I.
But we would have no, we would have no concrete or pathway to the female, uh, version of the field out there with the current. I'm assuming the pathway is going on the, uh, far side, so there would be no pathway for the girls sports if this is approved.
Eventually or?
I'm just saying this pathway goes to the baseball field. Has nothing to do with the female field, the softball field.
Can we put Jacob on the spot?
So I'm saying it, it would behoove us, I think, to table it because the plan should be. If we're gonna build this handicap accessible, uh, sidewalk, it should be to use it to get to both fields in some ma- matter. And I would probably say the easiest way to do that is probably readjust the girls softball field. So home plate's towards the tennis courts on this end of the grass and not where it currently is. Because then you could use the pathway for both fields and not double spend.
I, I can only say that I've been very close to this for now, for three years. With Dr. Iarussi, through, uh, all of these folks and we've had meetings after meetings and I've attended many of them. And, uh, if we table this tonight, we will, we will lose the support of this, these private individuals.
I don't know who they are, but it would be sad then that you've had three years of discussions and nothing for the females.
I know there are checks ready to be deposited and if we table this.
Are they aware that the softball isn't part of this proposal tonight?
Those have been, I think Steve has already talked about that. That's all part of it, that we have.
So our private donors will support male baseball and not female softball.
No, that's true.
Not somebody saying it all.
That's what, that's what they're supporting.
I just wanna do it right. I know we got a whole, well, I don't, are the tennis courts still out behind Harding? You know, that, that we don't use, I just, I just want the project to, I just wanna do it right without going too fast.
Tennis courts are.
No, the tennis court's behind Harding. I know, but they were, you know, I just wanna make sure that we do things right. We don't do things too quickly.
Well, I think what we're doing is step one right. And if we postpone it, it will end up in the next summer and then the next summer and kids are impacted.
There is no other step being proposed to this board but step one. That's it.
I think Steve talked about.
There's nothing on the agenda about step two, three, four, nothing. Step one is the only one being proposed and the only one being voted on. So stop talking about other steps because they're not in front of us at all. And step one, for the first time, is being talked about tonight.
I'm just saying if you want those other steps designed and funds raised for it, you're talking about another couple of year postponement.
No, I'm, I'm talking about, I am fine and, and just let's be clear. I'm fine if we roll this out in phases, but we should be bet, voting on the total phase, at least including girls somewhere in their field. Being repaired. If it doesn't happen for a couple of years, I understand because we're doing it in phases. But not to have a plan, but yet we're having a plan for the boys at four hundred some thousand is, is just not. But not to have a plan, but yet we're having a plan for the boys at 400-some thousand is just not right. It's just not.
All right, we have a motion to table items 10B and E.
Okay, Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
No.
Ms. Dyer?
No.
Mrs. McKay?
No.
Okay.
Okay, motion denied. Approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda as written. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yep.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Full business. We have none. We'll come to item nine A, administrative RIF. Recommendation of Superintendent regarding reduction in force. Superintendent recommends the board implement a reduction in force in the administrative staff for the purposes of reorganization and/or consolidation of administrative functions in accordance with Board Policy 1540 and Ohio Revised Code 3319.171. The reduction in force, if approved and directed by the board, will be for the suspension of the employment contracts of Samantha Schaffner, gifted and testing coordinator. The suspension of the contract will be effective at the end of day, May 17th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
In terms of gifted and testing coordinator then, is that going to be absorbed? Is somebody going to pick up those, that job?
I think at this time, it'd probably be best to discuss that in executive session.
Fair enough.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item B, overnight trip, an international youth silent film festival. Superintendent recommends the retroactive approval of the overnight trip for the Harding High School film students to Detroit, Michigan. Students departed on April 15th and returned on the 16th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
To Garrett and Scott, discussion.
Do we know how it went? We've heard yet, or?
I think it went well.
Yeah, I don't know if they've determined if they got placement, but I did speak with Ms. White today, and she said that nine students actually did attend the trip.
Okay.
So I didn't have much time to talk with her today, but.
And what do we say? We'll recognize them at the May meeting?
Yeah, I'm going to invite them to the May board meeting to be recognized.
And we also have their projects too, right?
Yes, we have their films. I can share those with you if you want to see them.
I know we've had successful students in the past, they hear, well, I'm going into film, and you think it's a joke, but then they come back with their films, and they've won awards, and it's great, so hold for it.
I can share those in the update on Friday to you.
That'd be great. All right, call the roll, please.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. MOU between MEA and Marion City Schools. Superintendent recommends approving an MOU between MEA and Marion City Schools to adjust supplemental track coaching positions as attached. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item number 10, E-rate Wi-Fi and switches. I feel like I'm talking to my husband. The amount of $199,897.08, from ESTER funds and $147,901.09 from the general fund. Superintendent recommends approval of a contract with Above the Cloud for the following cloud management switching. $81,747,000, cloud managed Wi-Fi, $212,000, Wi-Fi cabling, $10,739,000, total $304,978. Less the E-rating funding of $271,492. Net amount to the district is $33,000 plus non-E-rate items. The switching of $139,220, Wi-Fi cabling, Wi-Fi, and non-E-rate items for Grant, total of $199,897,897.08. Do I have a motion? For the ESTER funds and the general fund?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Discussion.
Veronica, you had mentioned this in your update. I wonder if you could add some more information for the public and for the board?
I would love to defer that question to Scott.
Which, I figured he was here for something.
Because it's a little bit of a foreign language to me.
Grateful he is.
Can you just explain exactly what this is doing?
Sure. Our Wi-Fi is, our Wi-Fi throughout the district, it's what we have currently is a leased Wi-Fi. So in, at the end of June, it will all go away because our lease is up. And if we don't replace it, then we wouldn't have any Wi-Fi in the district. So this is not a lease, this is us actually purchasing the Wi-Fi, so it would be ours. And at the end of three years, we don't have to replace it again. We can buy licensing to extend its life. And then the switching portion, because the box is out in the hall, but, oh, there's one right here. So that's the AP. Anybody that has a laptop or any device has to connect to that. So the more people that connect to it, the less bandwidth you get. The new technology requires a multi-rate switch, which is the switching component. The multi-rate switch, instead of only allowing one gig of bandwidth to this AP, would allow two and a half or five gig to the AP, depending on how many people connect to it. So it offers the end user a better, a better. Experience.
So if we don't have this, we don't have anything.
Correct.
We will no longer be leasing but purchasing with what sounds to be, from your words tonight, a better product for our staff and students.
Yes.
How often do you think we'd replace this system?
So the lease that we have had is every five years. This is the second, second term with the Cisco APs. We've had numerous problems with bandwidth and testing. The new solution, this is Wi-Fi 5, the new solution that we're proposing is Wi-Fi 6E, which is the current standard. The proposal there is for three years, which is, which gets us to the end of this E-rate cycle. And then when the next E-rate cycle starts for the next five years, that's when we could purchase additional licensing. Whether it's two years to get us five years, but since it's the new standard that's out, there should be no problem with getting the next five years, which would get us eight years on the AP.
And this is district-wide, correct?
District-wide, yes, okay.
An E-rate funding is a federal program that we get reimbursed for a lot of this, like $271,000.
Eighty-five percent.
Eighty-five percent, yes.
We only had $280,000 remaining out of our E-rate funding for this, which is why it didn't pick up all of it.
Thank you.
Thank you for being.
See why I didn't answer that?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I knew he was here for reasons, so thank you.
So our grant total that we're putting in from us is that 199 number?
Yeah, and the reason that all can't come from the ESTER funds is, some of this is for two, three-year contracts, and we can't go into ESTER funds, anything that extends beyond 2024. So I put everything in it that we could, and the rest of it was for products that were going to be used in the future years.
Got you.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item B, Grant Baseball Renovations. This is for $174,380.30. And it comes from capital funds, booster funds, private donations. Superintendent recommends the approval of a contract between Marion City Schools and the LUS Group for Grant Baseball Renovations pending receipt of $150,000 in donations from boosters and private funds. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I think we've had our discussions.
Just for the record, I mean, yeah, just for it, that we offer no female equivalent, and I will be voting no.
And also, just, just so it's clear, it's not that I'm against baseball nor softball. Just, I think I've stated it before, but again, just for the record, for those who are watching, if you missed the first discussion, please go back and watch, and that'll be it.
And for me, I know that the perception is going to go out in a way that shows a lack of support for female athletics from the people who made a motion on this board. And that's not the perception that I would like to. I don't want the public to think also that females are not included in this. I read this, this, about our facilities at the last meeting. And during that amount of time, I have met with individuals and I have talked with different people. And I am impressed by the community engagement that is getting behind this project. And I feel confident that our female athletes will not be left out of this process and this project. I was impressed when the community backed a capital campaign to renovate our football field and our football track and those type things. I think it's important that if the community members that I've met with have given me their word that we will go forth and female athletes will be considered, then their word is their bond, and that's all I need. So I feel confident that female softball players will be included in this renovation.
Well, just, just so it's clear, so everybody knows, it's not being tonight. We have a plan sometimes in the future, but it's not here tonight, nowhere in this.
It is not here tonight.
Nowhere in this $174,000 that we're getting ready to pass, the majority is getting ready to pass, does it include females in any shape or form?
And did you?
Unless they're going to play boys' baseball.
Well, and.
Or baseball.
Hey, that's, it's not unusual.
They could do it.
But there, when this was discussed last month, we had a whole month, we've had opportunity to go meet and talk with different individuals, Mr. Mousy and Kevin Hall, Dr. Moody. I mentioned that in the report that I gave in my subcommittee report last month. So, and I did that. I talked to individuals. Like I said, I have a plan. I didn't bring that notebook with me. But I feel confident that moving in this direction is going to be what's best for student athletes here at Marion Harding. Male and female.
You know, when this was first proposed, I, and Dr. Iarussi was still here, I stressed to him the importance of making sure we weren't in violation of the Title IX. I feel strongly, even though I was never a student athlete, probably because I don't have any athletic ability, but there was also very little athletic programs for girls when I went to school. And I ended up having boys, so, you know, I haven't been around girls' athletics that much. But I always felt that girls' athletics should have parity with boys' athletics. And I feel very strongly, I'm a very strong supporter of Title IX. And if I thought for one minute that those softball fields weren't going to be addressed, then yes, I would vote no. But I, I believe in the people that are doing this project, and I support what they're trying to do for our girls and our boys. And so that's why I'm voting yes.
Coach McQuary was here also. I wish we had asked him.
I've had conversations.
You've had conversations, okay.
All right, all right, call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
No.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right. Item C, Martin Public Seating for George Washington. $61,945.60 paid through for, by ESTER funds. The superintendent recommends the approval of a contract between Marion City Schools and Martin Public Seating for classroom furniture for George Washington University. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I just have a question. So it seems as if George Washington is getting a lot of new furniture. Veronica, are any other schools, is it because George Washington does not like the newer schools? Or is there, you know, like haze?
Here we go, now he's got it.
I mean.
What are they?
I think we did those last year.
So the original idea behind redoing George Washington and Grant, the reason is because it seemed like they were left out on the original furniture purchase, like they have, let's say, a garage sale of furniture. So we're trying to get those two buildings outfitted so it all looks cohesive and goes together. These, you're going to see one for Grant on there as well for tonight. That is the third round of ordering, so I'm trying to stage it so I can get rid of some of the old stuff, but also receive the new stuff. So we're going to get a shipment in June, hoping this last shipment comes in August before school starts. There might be one more order for each building, small amount, to finish up, and those two buildings will be completed.
Could you also comment quickly on the, what I imagine was the rising costs of education-based furniture? I was just doing a search online, I was, it is amazing. Typical cost of a desk.
I think it's like $250.
Couldn't believe it.
And chairs like $120.
Checking different companies, and this is, okay, gotcha.
It's a 400 student group.
And this is not, I mean, we're getting the best we can for our students, but this isn't top of the line. It's not way overboard in terms of bells and whistles. These are desks and chairs.
Correct.
Yes, okay, gotcha, thank you.
And you purchased before for all the other schools? Is that what you just told me?
I think we did prior.
We have been purchasing.
Yeah.
Yeah, remember the grant, now that you say the role of different phases, yes.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item D, Summer Employment of Students Ages 14 through 16 through Goodwill. Superintendent recommends approval of agreements between Marion City Schools and Goodwill Industries to allow students ages 14 to 16 to work during the summer as positions are filled by Goodwill Industries. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item E, LUS Group. This will be paid through capital funds. Superintendent recommends approval of agreements between Marion City Schools and the LUS Group for an ADA path to the baseball field at Grant Middle School. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
As stated before, it's not, obviously, we have to and should be ADA compliant. I just want to see the whole project. That's it, as I said before. Thank you.
And the ADA should include the girls' softball, which should be in a bigger picture of things that isn't before us tonight.
Right, all right, call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
No.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried, thank you. All right, item F, Martin Public Seating for Grant Middle School. For $112,174.10. All right, item F, Martin Public Seating for Grant Middle School, for $167,202.78 paid through by Esser. Superintendent recommends approval of agreements between Marion City Schools and Martin Public Seating for Classroom Furniture at Grant Middle School. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion?
Second.
All right, discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item G, Go Guardian. This is for $117,128. This is going to be paid through Safety Grants Title Fund, Title IV, and the General Fund. Superintendent recommends approval of a three-year agreement between Marion City Schools and Go Guardian software platform for K-12 schools to provide a range of digital safety and classroom management tools for educators. Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Do I have a second? Okay, discussion?
Olympia, you had mentioned in your summary for the agenda items that this will replace securely, correct? Is this a better product? Is it more cost-effective? Is it?
It is a better product. Tabitha's here, she probably knows it mostly.
If she wants, yeah.
About the differences that it has, but I know that it does offer us more, and it's much more user-friendly for our staff.
Yeah, we did a lot of research on this product last year, and with all the move-around administration, it didn't come before you guys, so we had to continue it securely for another year. So we've had lots of issues here and there. We've done a pilot with Go Guardian. We worked with teachers, the whole tech department is behind it on switching just because of the ease of use. And it will give our teachers more control, which they want, they're asking for, for this project, so that's what we're looking at.
And it's something you wanted to do a while back, too, correct?
Correct, yeah. I had it brought to cabinet a year ago, but it didn't get to you guys, so we're getting it now.
Okay.
We have the quantity of being 4,400. Could you explain that to me?
The number of students.
We don't have 4,400, do we?
I gave that to you, John.
That was 4,100 or something like that.
Well, we have to count in any students that's in our building for any amount of time.
Okay.
Including some of the tri-rovers kids. So roughly, they have a breakdown of like, you don't get a price break until it's like 5,000 or whatever, so it's roughly 4,400.
Okay, so that's.
It's usually what number it is.
So what you're explaining is the disparity is other kids for any period of time that might be here for our class, it's not here necessarily all day. We have to provide for that as well.
Correct. Any student that would use any part of our network, we have to filter, well, not just students, but teachers also, but that's included. Teachers are free, I guess, if you would say it that way.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim.
All right, call the roll, please.
Okay.
And just briefly, this is replacing something else we don't have two going on, right? Thank you.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item H, Youth Science, $13,400. Budget source is $7,000 from an MTC summer grant and $6,400 from Esser Funds. Superintendent recommends approval of a contract between Marion City Schools and Youth Science for Software for Career Tracking and Planning as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right, do we need an executive session for the consent agenda? Okay.
Yeah, probably. Yeah.
Which item? Okay, so we'll go into executive session.
A.
I need a motion to go into executive session for item one?
It'll be, yeah.
Can we also, I don't know if we publicly have to.
We can just go in for one thing, well, for the employment in this.
With what Olympia and I discussed earlier?
That's employment.
Item nine, so that, just so we know, the public knows.
So it's just B?
It's item one.
Item one meaning the reasons to go in.
Reason to go into executive session, under item one. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, call the roll.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. We're good going into a brief, hopefully, executive session, and we'll return if there's a need. All right. And we're back. So we're going to pull item B. We're going to pull and vote on it separately. Item J, we're pulling Amber Kyle and Summer Schnebel out of item J, and we'll vote on them separately. And item M, we're pulling out Donetta Evans, and we'll vote on that separately. So everything else is consent agenda. So I need a motion for the consent agenda with those three items pulled.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, call the roll.
I'm sorry, Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item B.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Was there a discussion or not?
Yeah, we had a discussion on that.
For the record.
Do we, we don't discuss consent items?
We don't discuss what?
Consent items.
We don't discuss personnel matters.
Personnel matters.
I'm not discussing personnel, I'm discussing a position matter.
Okay.
So, yeah. My problem with item B is that we're combining or removing a combined position, which was Assistant Superintendent slash Director of Teaching and Learning, and now making two positions. I think this costs the district well over $125,000 of needless funds by doing so. So as far as the position, I think it should remain Assistant Superintendent slash Director of Teaching and Learning, and I understand the majority does not think so, so. Thank you for giving me that opportunity, guys.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
No.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right, and then we'll come to item J. We're pulling out the names Amber Kyle and Summer Schnebel. We'll vote on them separately.
Move to approve both of those names, the volunteers.
Second.
All right. Discussion, call the roll.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Upstate.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
I'm sorry, already said you. Ms. McKay?
Motion carried.
I didn't count your vote twice, though.
Well, you know. Item M, we're pulling out the name of Donetta Evans to be voted on separately. Do I have a motion?
Motion? Second.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Upstate.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right. All right now, almost there. Did I miss item 12? We're in what?
I don't think so, just did.
Nope.
Okay, we're done. All these pages. Item 13, we have future board meetings are listed there. We probably will have a special board meeting later next week for treasures.
Do you have anything set up, or you're gonna do that later?
We'll have to figure that out tonight.
All right, cool.
Remind me.
Give me a heads up.
All right.
I'll let you know.
We'll go to committee reports. Before we do that, I do want, I forgot to mention this earlier. I do wanna recognize the Harding Hall of Fame, Athletic Hall of Fame recipients recently, this, what was that, Friday night?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so that would have been Sean and Shontae Dyer and Brené Harris for basketball, Heidi Clark for track, and swimming, and Sarah Woodrum also for track and cross-country probably. So those are, you know, really.
And Mr. McQuary.
And Scott McQuary for, recurring for what he's done to support our students over the years. So I just wanted to say.
Thank you.
Just that little brief thing. I mean, we've had some really fine athletes come through Marion Harding, and they're a pleasure to watch.
Right, and it's, we only do it every two years, and we hadn't done it for a long time, so it was nice to get back in the swing of things post-COVID.
Yeah, and if you weren't able to go, you can watch the video.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Roll.
It was great. Appreciate it. Watched it today between students. All right, we'll go real quickly through committee reports. Extracurricular, Rocky and Tara, anything? Or you meet infrequently, right? A couple times a year?
I don't take it that.
Nothing?
Since the last report, Tara.
Buildings and grounds?
Well, we did Buildings and Grounds with softball.
Yeah, we did. Communication, that's Ted and me. Ted, did you have anything?
I don't have anything new to report. We did meet.
We did meet, no, no, we'll meet again in May. And the one takeaway I had was we have over 10,000 followers on our social media accounts, which is a pretty significant number. Diversity and Equity, Scott and I met with Johnny. I think one of my best takeaways was we are going to be looking for a, well, we have to develop the board policy first, but a student representative to be on the board, non-voting. But I'm, this has been something I've kind of dreamed about for a long, long time, and so I'm very excited that, you know, Johnny mentioned this, and Scott seemed really supportive, and so I think this will be a really great addition, a chance for leadership skills to be developed with a new student that will come to us and hopefully be excited about the work that we're doing.
And I appreciate the rebooting of the equity audit, as we've said, with the survey and everything. I think that was handled extremely well, and we're, in terms of the data that we could get, and we'll see what the next step brings us to, so thank you for that.
And in terms of finance, we haven't had a meeting.
No, we couldn't find a date, but we will.
We'll find it.
Yeah.
And then policy, well, we have those below.
On the one policy, can we get, the one has, they're all a bunch of, not all of them, but most of them are tobacco policies. On the one, under the students section of the policy, and then it refers to enforcement as to the student handbook or whatever, can we put the item or the, it says student handbook, it refers you to the student handbook, but can we put in that policy the number for the student?
Which one?
It's the one that talks about the students.
5512.
The lower number.
You mean put a reference to 5512 into the student handbook?
Yeah, because it says students who violate the policy shall be subject to disciplinary action according with, accordance with the Student Code of Conduct slash Student Discipline Code in accordance with the policy of the board.
Yeah.
If we can put the actual number, so then you can know where to go find that.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, so it'd be easy to find on the enforcement. You know, whatever, whatever that code section is for the student policy, then you can easily find the enforcement section, I guess, on what you have to look at.
I think that makes sense.
All right.
I mentioned, or meant to mention this earlier, too, with the transportation, the 30-minute change, did anybody wanna comment on that, or? I hate to spring it up now, I should've brought it up when we were discussing transportation.
8,600.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
It's up on the screen.
Do we have it?
I don't know why I can't get into that page.
Yeah, towards the middle of the page up front, right there, it's good. Transportation will only be provided if it requires 30 minutes or less of district travel by a school bus during normal travel times as measured from the school building to which student would be assigned in the district. Is that a drastic change from what we've had in the past, or?
Basically, some of the Ohio Vice Code changed, so this is Neola's recommendation. All of this, all of these recommendations come from the changes to RC, yeah.
Gotcha, okay. I didn't know if that was gonna happen.
So they, yeah, no, they just recommend that we obviously accept these so that we're in compliance, our policies are in compliance.
Would that help our situation at all, or would there be minimal impact as a result of this, or?
We won't have any. We don't train for anybody outside of the district that, to a charter, to a charter school, this is for charter school.
Okay, so not two? All right, that answers my question.
That was also in 8,600, right?
Yeah.
Like, all the way down.
It shows up a couple times.
On the first page, it says furthermore, transportation to, and then the blackened section, it says attending a chartered community school, right? But then, like, the next line, it starts saying if that community school, hopefully we can put if that chartered community school, and anytime it says community school, have the word chartered in front of it, so we know we're talking about chartered community schools. So it keeps the same language throughout, so no one's gonna get confused, is this a community school or the chartered community school?
Okay.
Because it then switches, we have it there, but then it switches back to just community school. So I got confused reading it, is this something different, or are we still on chartered community schools? Just the word chartered needs to be in front of community school throughout the rest of the policy.
Yeah, I was worried student services-wise, like, I was, does this affect us? But if it's charter schools.
Yeah, you would think it might.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I was worried where you're going, okay, gotcha, that's good news, and thank you.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
There's still some money from public education. There's still some money from public education. Okay, all right. All right, um, so that's our first reason.
Do we skip over curriculum or are we not there? We meet tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, curriculum tomorrow, my fault.
Okay, tomorrow. All right, um, we need to go into executive session.
Hang on, can I do, uh, student achievement and we'll be done? And then people, I mean, let's just finish it and people can just go.
Go ahead, Tara.
Yeah, um, first of all, um, Chitty Chitty Bang Bang, how many you plan on going this weekend? Our Grant Middle School musical? Chitty Chitty, I know you'll be there, cause you're everywhere. So I just wanted to shout that out, um, also.
Do you have the showtimes or anything?
No, I don't have showtimes.
I don't either.
I'll get them to you.
Seven, Friday, Saturday, and then two o'clock, Monday and Sunday.
Okay, so Friday, seven o'clock, Saturday, seven o'clock.
And it's here, right?[1633.02]